Being the hour six o'clock, I call the Oxford School Committee meeting Monday, April 12th, 2021 to order. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the opening meeting law, MGL Chapter 38, subsection 18, and the governor's order concerning imposing strict limitations, number of people that may gather in one place, meetings in town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link or number to call in or other similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate saying, despite best efforts, we will post recorder sessions of the meeting as soon as possible. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort we made to ensure that the public can adequately access to meetings. For individuals who should participate remotely, please dial 1-646-558-8656 and enter PIN 874-1758-7486, or join the meeting via the link on the town's website, for school committee website and the school committee meetings, passcode 932917. With that, I call a meeting to order. With the agenda this evening, we'll have, we'll hear some reports from Kim Davis, OEA President, Kadian Phillips, Technology Director, and Corey Burke will give us an update from the Superintendent Selection Committee. Following that, we'll have an audit in facility rentals out of our business office, and then we'll talk about the elementary and reopening plans. With that, first order of business, Ashley McGowan, I can see finally that you are online. Ashley?
Hi, thanks for having me tonight. As students start transitioning back full-time, the school is already starting to feel more active and spirits seem to be rising, so we're anticipating a smooth transition when those who elected to come back return April 28th. And I'd also like to congratulate Megan Raymond, who won her election for State Secretary of the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. We're so incredibly proud of her work during her campaign, and we can't wait to see what she does with her position, as well as in her own student council during her senior year next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Yes, and congratulations to Megan. Next order of business, we have minutes for the meeting from March 21st, 2020. All members present, maintain a motion to approve those minutes.
I make the motion.
Move to second discussion. Being none all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved by five zero vote. Next, we have a technology surplus list. These items will be discarded, again, through retired technology from our packet. Maintain a motion to approve the list as printed.
I make the motion. I'll second it.
Move to second discussion. Being none all favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, five zero. As we transition through, the next order of business, I'll call Mrs. Davis, OEA President, forward, please. Good evening.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Is it okay if I take this off, or should I keep it on?
No.
Okay. Easy, aye. Thank you. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm really, really happy and proud to be able to come here and talk to you about the evolution of this year for the teachers and the union members. As you know, it's been a very long, exhausting, physically, mentally, emotionally year. The challenges that we faced this year with putting a plan together in the beginning, spending last summer, and what we feel was a pretty aggressive hybrid schedule was overwhelming for many of us at first. Overcoming the fear of the virus and all the information we were hearing to actually come in, to do our jobs, was also a challenge. We used the PD at the beginning of the year to kind of get a baseline, a schedule, an outline, wrap our heads around what we needed to know, and we took it from there. And some of the accomplishments, and this is just a few of them, a few highlights of what we are most proud of as teachers, is that all teachers exceeded the time on learning minimums. Many, many teachers stayed online live with those kids all day, many. And many were available to answer emails or phone calls or texts late at night, well beyond time on learning. We also, in the progress of that, are working our curriculum maps. They're progressing, they're being followed, they're being followed, you know, as best we can through this year, and they should be accomplished by the end of the year. So those maps, we didn't forget the other parts of our job. Teachers shut down their personal lives for the safety of everybody. They stayed in, they stayed away. They didn't travel, even though they wanted to. They stayed home because that was what was safe for the district and the students. Like I said, I think we put together a good hybrid schedule, but it was aggressive, and we knew that. And we did what was best, what we thought would be best for the kids. We did the model that was turned out to be better than many surrounding towns, and we heard from a lot of people in the community, and the parents who are teachers in other communities commend the teachers on the schedule that we had and that we put together. And we heard a lot of praise from the community on that, and we're very proud of that. There are areas that bother us now when we hear on the news, they're talking about generalized statements about learning gaps. We've put in a lot of effort, Herculean effort, to get all those learning gaps with everybody, not just the teachers, the whole staff at Oxford Public Schools. Students gained real-life skills, they gained SEL practices, they've become more technology proficient even at the kindergarten level than ever. These are life skills that they'll always take with them, and I know there were a lot of downs in this year, but there were some, there were some things that could be used good and could be good for the kids in the future, the students. And above all of that, we still taught curriculum. And whether they were in front of us or they were remote, they had access to everything. So that, you know, there was a great deal of learning going on, probably more now than ever before. And to hear it say, well, learning gaps, we know there are going to be gaps, yes, but there was a lot of learning that went on in the Oxford schools. And the membership and the whole Oxford staff have to be credited for that. So as you all know, I teach first grade, and last week was our first week of live students, or my first week of the year of live students, and having all of our students back. Although scary, again, another transition, it was a good, it was a good week. People are happy. Those who are doing hybrid were happy to be with just their kids and all of their kids. Those of us who are still doing hybrid, the kids, the students are making the adjustment. It's amazing. And as a first-grade teacher, it was kind of funny, our word of the day today was brave. And I always ask the students to tell me what that word means when a word of the day comes up. And they said, well, brave means to be strong and to be fearless and have no fear. And I said, well, that was a good definition, but the definition of brave is being fearful but still doing it and accomplishing it. And that kind of made me think of our teachers and our staff. There was a lot of fear, but they worked through it, and they found a way to do what they had to do as a job. And I think all of our staff and our teachers are full of brave people. They're all brave. Lastly, I want to personally thank Dr. Nash for her openness, her cooperative nature as we navigated this year from last summer all the way through. She was open, she included me on things. I was at meetings all summer. We would, I probably can't even name the number of emails, texts, phone calls that went on, just to clarify things, to make sure we're doing the right thing. We didn't know how it would play out, but the teachers and the staff dug in and they made it happen, and I thank you, Dr. Nash, for your leadership and cooperative nature and inclusiveness to help us to get this done. So that is our update, and hopefully next year we'll be a little more normal and quiet. So.
Just a wealth of gratitude. I can never say thank you enough for the sacrifices that were made by all educators in this district. It was amazing, and it was just, it made me personally so proud and truly grateful. And my kids, I feel like every single one of them had an outstanding year, and it was amazing to see what you folks did. I just, I'm in awe because I know how hard it is, and you guys made it look effortless at times, even though I'm sure it was not that way, and there was countless lost hours of sleep and personal time, like you said, and not having the ability to see family and travel and do things because you guys made a great sacrifice to keep our kids safe and healthy. So thank you all for all those sacrifices.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin. And I have to say from all of us, every parent that I talked to at the grocery store, on walks through neighborhood, no matter where their children were, the foster kids that are under their care, second daycare type people coordinating, everything was coordinated through the Oxford Public Schools, I heard nothing but gratitude, the thanks, and the sincerity in their eyes when they talk to you. You can't read mouth anymore, now you're reading eyes, and like, they really appreciate what these teachers did, no matter what time, like you said, someone emails at night, and they get responses. You really set, you set the bar extremely high going forward, and I thank you for that.
Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, just a couple of points, Kim. Thank you for that. I know, you know, September and I are part of the, we were probably only part of like a third of those conversations between you and Dr. Nash, but that collaboration is just, it was powerful. And if you didn't have it, it would have been a struggle, and I've seen it in other districts and other avenues. So kudos to both of you for working together, because it took cooperation and it took people to work together and come to consensus on how we were going to move forward in the best interest of kids. So great job. The learning gaps, I mean, you know, we're dealing with obviously the district I work in and the building I work in, and they're going to be there. I think that's what's going to make, you know, all of us in education, we got in this to help kids, and we'll just, we're going to do that, right? We're going to evaluate at the end of the year, see where kids are at, and we're going to make those, you know, whether it's a summer component or in the fall, we'll cut any gaps down, but people did a great job. I love the word brave. I think that is the word for all of us throughout this whole thing, right? I think everybody did that in the best interest of kids. So I thank you for all of those comments and into your leadership within your union. I guess I have a question for you, if you wouldn't mind segueing off a little bit. I know you've been part of the last couple of superintendent's search committees. Could you just comment on this one that you've been part of?
The committee?
Yeah. Just how this whole process has gone for you, and how confident are you moving forward with this committee and what we've done?
Well, I mean, like you said, I've been on a couple, and this one was, you know, it had a different feel to it. I like the way, you know, in the beginning, how, you know, everybody was brought together. There was a different level to it. When it, you know, came down to, and it was good to have a variety of people and different perspectives that came in, because, you know, you do have a variety of people and different perspectives on the previous one as well, but I do feel that it was organized, you know, to a degree. So, you know, it worked well that way. You kind of put me on the spot there, Dave, thank you.
Yeah, no, I just was, I was just curious. I was just curious how you felt about it, how the membership has felt about it. I mean, let's face it, this is a huge decision for this district, and, you know, with just the instability in it of a permanent person, not our interim, you know, the two stints have been amazing, but when we've hired somebody permanently in this district over the past, I don't know, six, seven years, there's obviously that, I don't want to say fear, but reservation, and so I'm just wondering from your perspective, are people worried about this? And I'm just looking to have a conversation with people to say that, hey, listen, we're looking for the right person. We know, this board knows what we need based on the input from all the stakeholders in the town, and I was just curious. I know I did put you on the spot, but I appreciate it.
I think that there is, and I didn't talk to the membership, so I may be speaking more from a personal aspect than I am for the membership, but I do think there's still that reservation of, I want to get the right person in. We don't want that turnover, we don't want that, that constant change that's been going on. There's, we want somebody to come in and work with us and respect us and know what the Oxford community, Oxford teaching staff has to offer, and not talk at us, but work with us and help us to build up. And I think that that is what's important. I know, like I said, I didn't talk to the membership, so I can't speak on their behalf, but I think as someone who's been president here for seems like 60 years, six or seven years now, I know that that change and that constant change in that new directive is very, very difficult for morale, and I think that having a leader, and it's not just for teaching staff, it's for all staff, it's for the administrative staff, it's for everybody. Having a leader who sits down and listens to people and is able to work with people and able to build people up and build from within, for me personally, would be the most important quality that I hope that you select to bring in, because that is what's important. There's amazing people that are in this district and amazing people that can be built up, and I really hope somebody, whoever you choose who comes in focuses in on that and recognizes that, because what we did this year in all of this with a lot of fear and reservation, and the way it's been pulled off needs to be commended and needs to be recognized.
Absolutely. I appreciate your insight, and I apologize for putting you on the spot.
It's all right, I'll get you back.
Kim, I think first of all, thank you for your thoughts on that, and we'll be giving an update in a few minutes about what our next steps are, so you can hear how that process is going to continue. But going back to your presentation tonight, I want to speak just from a parent perspective and my three children that are in Oxford right now and the experiences they had, how impressed I was at the upper level with teachers who were tracking down kids saying, you know, I know this technology piece and turning in assignments is new to you, so here's what's missing, and here's how you can turn it in, or answering emails all hours, you know, when my daughter's upset and worried that she thought she turned it in, but she can't figure out if she did turn it in. And particularly my youngest son, who somehow in this tumultuous year just found a love for learning that he didn't have before. And so I want to, if you don't mind, I'm going to shout out Mrs. Gonya, his third-grade teacher. It's been tremendous, and for that to happen during all this just shows what an effort that your teaching staff has put in, so I want to thank you all for that.
It was, it was a very creative year.
Yeah.
I've had more stickers on my face this year than I'd ever want to have, but if that's what it takes, we'll do it.
Thank you.
Hi, Kim.
Hi.
Thank you for your report. I appreciate all that information, heartfelt, and I agree with everything that you said about how hard our teachers worked. And in the community, I'll echo what Mr. Coonan said, all I heard was great things, especially from teachers in other districts who had students here, and how impressed everybody was that we were seamless, that we started with a plan that we stuck with, we didn't go back and forth, and how important that was. So also, I want to echo Dave with the negotiations, you were also part of the reason that it was as easy and seamless as it was, as well as Dr. Nash, but, you know, that working together and cohesiveness and honesty and open dialogue, so I appreciate all your extra time on that. And of course, I will echo everything Mrs. Griffin said. We just really appreciate and we're grateful and can't thank the teachers enough.
Thank you. I will relay that back to them.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next up, I can see, I can see now, David, I can see, right there. Mr. Phillips, here are the.
Yes. Well, thank you for having me to discuss the technology in the district, just to give an update on where we are. I'll start by echoing what Kim Davis said, that a lot of the successes wouldn't have been possible without all the hard work of the staff, especially the teachers who basically had to step up and learn new things, pretty much overnight, you know, a new way of teaching, and they really worked together with their teams, and, you know, with some help from the, our technology team to support what they were doing. But the work really went to them, they were the ones who were doing a lot of the hard work. So for us, you know, we're a small department, I say this all the time, we, you know, we're always, we support all the technology in the district, and especially this year, we're using more technology than ever before, which is exciting. So moving forward, I think my goal is how do we keep this momentum moving forward? You know, we have all these devices that we've purchased, teachers are using all these new platforms, so we want to make sure that we can sustain them moving forward with more PD, make sure that, you know, we're using it in an effective way. We did hire a new technology specialist or assistant this year, which is very helpful. You know, as I said, we've been running around with every kid, we're one-to-one now with our Chromebooks, so we did get a Chromebook for every student, so we're supporting those, plus all, every, almost every room where the teachers are working have two devices in, because when they were doing remote, they had one they were teaching from and one they were using to monitor the students and so on. So a lot of support that we needed to provide, and we were able to do that. The one-to-one is really exciting moving forward. We've talked about that, we selected Chromebooks because we're a Google, Google school, we, most of our systems are for Google for email, for Google Classroom, Google Meet, so the Chromebooks were the, you know, device of choice, and they're relatively cheap. But in your packet, you'll see that our fleet is aging. So if you look at that document, you'll see that we're close to, I think, 750 devices that are going to be out of support at the end of this, by September. And what's an end of support means, it's not that we're going, they're not, they're going to stop working, it basically means it's going to stop getting updates. So with updates not being able to be performed on those devices, it's, it may not be supported for certain, for certain functionality. For example, one thing I'm really worried about now is MCAS testing, if we're going to use the devices for that. Typically, they'll have a minimum system requirement for testing online, so they'll basically say, you know, you need at least Chrome OS 85, and if we have an older device that we can't get past OS 75, then basically we won't be able to use that device, similar to like your phones, if, you know, if the iOS update doesn't get past a certain place and you can't do those updates. So I've been in conversation with Dr. Nash and Justin, our business manager, in terms, trying to get some funding possibly through grants or end-of-year savings that we could potentially use to hopefully start or hopefully do the entire aging portion of the fleet, where we can at least stay up to date with what we have, so it will support us moving forward for at least the next couple of years. Ideally, once we get past that, then we will get to a situation where we have an annual refresh line in the budget, where we, instead of replacing 750, we're replacing 100, 150 a year, so it can be sustainable within the budget. And if there are any questions about that, I can stop there before I move on.
Mr. Phillips, could you? No, go ahead.
Okay. So the next issue we're working on now is, David mentioned the last time I was there was, we also have some aging boards, smart boards in the district, so we're actually working through those now. So the, at Chaffey, we had two that we actually just replaced today. We have two getting replaced at the high school tomorrow, and then we have seven more we've identified at the high school, and these were older smart boards that were, that we acquired through a grant a couple of years ago, but we're definitely starting to see them fail. So we will be able to cover those from the budget this year. I'm also working with Justin, again, our business manager, to do the middle school, and we identified nine rooms there, and that's a little bit more expensive, but we're trying to secure funding for that. So we're choosing Epson interactive projectors for those, they've worked well, and that would basically mean all the rooms in the district would essentially have an Epson interactive projector, which great, which is great to standardize. So, you know, if we need to replace a ball, it's all the same, and we've had pretty good success with those. And again, they're cheaper than a smart board and one point of failure, failure, because it's not a board and a projector, it's just a projector that we basically need to replace. So we're working through that right now. This year with the technology online, we've been pretty solid in terms of internet connectivity, you know, knock on wood. We did upgrade our internet over the summer prior to COVID, this was in the plans, so it actually worked out well, where we're doing remote meetings every day with Google Meet, and for the most part, we were able to, to, to support that with our network. So those upgrades that we've made throughout the years were definitely necessary, and again, it's something that we have to keep, make sure that we're sustaining that moving forward. So we've identified some other core switching that we'll replace, and we already have funding through capital through the town, so we'll be good there. We have a new website that we're hoping to roll out in the next few weeks, we're still doing a few more updates, but our current website, it's a Google site that we've had for, since I've been with the district, and it's time for refreshes. It's a little, it's an older-looking site, so we're going to go with a more modern look with app integration, where parents can sign up for an app and they can, and it'll look better on a mobile phone. And also, it will do the, we do have to make sure that it's accessible for visually impaired, so there are some accessibility features built in, so I'm excited about that. So look out for the new site that will probably get out in the next couple of days, or hopefully, hopefully next couple of days, a couple of weeks at the most. And then the last thing for me is, we're actually doing COSIN, which is a national technology organization. I secured a peer review where they'll come in with a reviewer and two outside, and two outside tech directors, they're actually guys in the industry, and they'll interview a couple of members of the staff, and we're, I'm actually going to hopefully get a committee member or two who'll be willing to sit in on that. And it's just a quick Zoom call, probably half an hour to an hour for each call, just talk about our technology, and then from that, I'm hoping to create a technology plan for the district. We haven't had one in a couple of years, and I think that will be a great stepping stone just to get that technology plan written up by getting that outside agency to come in and see what we're doing, and then move forward from there. So I'll reach out probably through the chair or just to get, I think we need two, two members of the committee who would be interested. And yeah, that's it for me for tonight.
Thank you. Can I go again?
Hey, Kadian, could you just talk about the 750 devices that will be no longer able to receive updates after this summer? Could you just explain what that looks like? I mean, are they just pulled off completely? And how are they replaced or whatnot?
Right. So we have a couple of devices right now that are, that are out there that kids are using that are off-support already. You can, they can get on the internet, they can, they can use it for almost everything. There are just some websites that do not support, you know, like an earlier version of Chrome, you know, and typically where we'll run into trouble is when we're using specialized software, like testing software, where they will require, for security reasons most of the times, that you were at least at a certain version of the OS for testing. So we could still use them as spheres in-house, we could definitely use it with the younger kids, those 750, but it's, I'm more worried about specialized like testing with the software. So we're using them for AP testing, we're using them for MCAS testing.
So those 750, are they like in kids' hands now, or they have already been kind of pulled from the fleet?
They're in kids' hands right now.
All right. So then is the plan to swap them out for the fall? Okay.
Yeah, correct, if we are able to secure funding to replace them.
Okay. Thank you.
Time to go.
Hi, Kadian. Thank you for all that information. I just wanted to say thank you to you and your team, because you guys are a huge part of the success of the teaching staff and of the district, so thank you for that. I also want to say how much I appreciate your foresight and planning so that we don't get, you know, all of a sudden we have most of our Chromebooks that are no good and no money to replace them, so I do appreciate that. Just one quick question for you on the report that you provided us, the devices that are not yet issued. The devices that are not yet issued? We have 150 Chromebooks?
And those? 300. We actually have 300 that are not yet issued. So over the summer, when everyone was trying to go remote, there was a shortage of Chromebooks out there. So so we managed to get all the devices out that we needed. And then we secured funding again where we had 300 more that got delivered after we're fully remote. So those are our spheres right now that we can get back out there. So that will that can help with replacing the 750. So so then we'd only need 450 more.
Right, right. Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Oh, good. No, I'll speak at the end.
So so as you will recall, when we came to you with recommendations for the potential funding for the end of the school year, we were talking about approximately $600,000. We're looking at about $200,000 more at this point in time, which is good news and could be a little bit more than that. We also have two other funding streams that Katie and I have talked about. One, of course, is Easter two money and the other is our ARP Easter, our Easter three money. So I fully believe that you're going to see us come back potentially first looking at our end of year funds FY '21 to address the 450. So I'm confident that we'll be able to handle that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Phillips, as far as next year goes, I know we can't predict the future. But I'm kind of thinking that, God forbid, if we have to have classrooms where they're streaming again, has the district considered investing in technology like owl cameras or something to that effect where if there's a hybrid class and our teachers are still streaming students in, they're still able to see their peers with a little more ease? What are your thoughts on that?
We haven't thought about it. We could look into it right at the, you know, right now. The the teachers haven't requested that from us. Yeah, I could definitely look into that.
So how are they? I know they manage things in a remarkable way. But is there a way where the students are able to see their peers that it might be in the room or?
Yeah, so when they do, not as much because the 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 teacher typically has one web camera set up in front that she'll basically point towards herself or the board that that they're showing. So the kids are home. So, you know, they can rotate the cameras in that room if you were if you were going to look at the other kids. Or sometimes the kids will be on their Chromebooks also. So so the room becomes, you know, a full room, even though some kids are in person and some kids are at home.
That makes sense. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm just going to conclude with just a couple of comments. I've done, Katie, and you came district, well, about five or six years ago. I remember the first time Dr. Dr. Garso says, Dan, you're going to meet this crackerjack guy I have. We were talking about when I came, one of my visions when I came on board was to bring your own device. You hear about everyone talking about, you know, people getting tablets, they're getting mini computers, they're getting phones and they're fighting with them in school. And I was talking to a parent and it was a principal, it was a principal before Mr. Karkila was over there. And it wasn't misspell humor. He's like, we're from fighting with kids over phones. Said, well, shouldn't we teach them how to use their phone for an edu- in an educational purpose and structure this? So we started looking at the, on their former superintendent, this bring your own device committee. And then Dr. Garso comes in and he says, Dan, my guy solved it right here. He teaches, he goes, this is what we're going to do. And both of you laid out this amazing plan with pure innovation to build this infrastructure. Then he even said, one day, who knows, we get this big snowstorm and we kids can't come to school for a while. I have to have a plan ready. And you did that. And I think you did that. I work for the city of Worcester and they've got a pretty good team there as well. But I think what you pulled off with your limited budget, you're much limited in terms of number of employees, dedication sky high, you pulled off the impossible. I mean, talk about a pure innovation. Then what I hear tonight? Not that everything you do isn't perfect. Now I talk about and you're talking about for a peer review to bring local directors to come in and say, where can I get better? What are my shortcomings here? What's I can, you know, it's working and you probably know where you're telling us what the shortcomings are. But we're only setting this up to get even stronger and stronger and stronger. And and the benefit of all this is our students. Because our students, what have they learned during this pandemic? That they knew that their technology was going to work. The teachers knew for the most part, unless it was on Google's side, the infrastructure was there. You're just going to turn it on and adapt your practice. And I heard your coaching was incredible to get people up to practice. And it still is with professional development that's being offered. Katie, I thank you from the bottom of my heart that you put this district on the forefront of remote learning and you set it up before. We didn't struggle, you said, we didn't struggle. You knew where it was. You knew what devices you needed to get rolled out. Everyone else is scrambling for it like you're just passing out the keys. Thank you again.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Anything else? All right, Mr. Phillips, thank you. Enjoy your night.
You too. Thank you. Bye.
Yep. Okay. Next up, Corey Burke for our superintendent selection committee.
Sure. So the school committee interviewed the four candidates that the screening committee had moved forward. Was that last week, last week? And has voted to move forward to finalists are two candidates, Mike Lucas and Dean Packard. Our next steps are for us to visit, do a site visit at their current places of employment. And we're also going to have them come visit Oxford, meet with the administration. There are also going to be times made available for them to meet with our staff. And then we will gather some feedback from that process before our final interview and final vote, hopefully, May 10th, I believe it is. Is that the date? So that's where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Burke.
Next on our agenda, business manager, business manager, Justin Ladue, please. Report out of business office. We'll be hearing audit report and then about facility rentals.
Thank you, Chairman Coonan, members of the committee. As part of your packet, you should have received four documents. This is our audit report. Now, I probably provided way too much information, but I'm going to talk about things that are specific to the schools. Those four components are the basic financial statements, which it's a broad overview of the town, the net position, specific to the school, the end of year report, the report I've put together every September and file with the state. The single audit, which is our audit of federal grants. And a management letter, which again, this is more of like a document that the Board of Selectmen or management on the town side. But I figured it's useful as it's, you know, being a department of the town would provide all the information that I receive. So the first item I have is the financial statements. And I'll go fairly quickly through this. I guess the most glaringly obvious thing here is the the deficit of the the net position for the town primarily due to OPEB and post employment benefits. I had a conversation with Ms. Griffin earlier and I think she had said it best, but most towns have this situation. And again, it's more of a, what do I want to say? On paper, that's what it is. That's how we have to report it. So it is what it is. I don't have a solution or I'm not going to pretend to. But I did want to mention that. And that's been, what, 10, 10 to 12 years that's been showing up? For an extremely long time. As long as I can remember in my my time with the town. That's always been an issue.
It became first an option about 10 years ago, it really came to a forefront. It was always a stare and it's compared, don't worry about it, don't worry about it.
Correct. I don't think anybody really has a real solution to it. But it's, again, I figured I didn't mention it. The it has grown a little bit. It increased by about 1.3 million from fiscal 19 to 20. In other news, in other things, the the auditors did did highlight that, you know, the town had received 1.2 million in entitlement funds, you know, through coronavirus aid and the CARES Act. One of the big changes that that I took away, it doesn't seem like a lot, but it's the way that leases are reported, that we now have to report leases a little bit different than we have in the past. This year, it's more of a list of all of our active leases, which for the school side, we mostly lease our copy machines and postage machines. That's we don't have much. So whether or not that's going to be a material item where we have to report it a certain way, yet to be determined. But this will be for fiscal '22. But I think the auditors wanted to prep us this year to get us in the habit of of reporting our leases. And another thing that's coming down the pike that I really haven't looked at for this, for fiscal '20, I may look at it for '21, but it will be mandatory for '22, is the subscription based IT arrangements, which I know that's going to be huge because most of our, all of our software, I I'm comfortable saying all of our, is a subscription based service. There's nothing that we own for software that's outright. It's all what normally web based and we pay a subscription monthly. The the next item is the the management letter. And again, I'll probably repeat myself a little bit. These are really just observations and suggestions made by our auditing firm. Excuse me, the auditing firms, Roselli and Clark, we've had them for three years now. One thing they observed was there was a lot of cost saving initiatives due to COVID-19 and what had happened when the shutdown occurred. I mean, the state told us everything's going to be level funded for fiscal '21. So a lot of things were done in anticipation of that happening. I don't think it was exactly level funded, but we had to, we had to kind of plan on worst case scenario during that time period between March and June of last year. I did speak to the leases a little bit, the way that they're going to be changed, the accounting standards are for receipts and expenditures, excuse me, I didn't mention that. When I say leases, I'm talking copy machines and and but that also applies to if we're going to lease a building or at least we're receiving some type of revenue for leasing space. One of the other things that the auditors noted, and I think I've seen this before as a repeat item, is the network security. But now more than ever, with people working from home, this is a major concern. They're not necessarily saying that we're doing anything wrong, but they want to put it out there that just be hyper aware that with the increase of folks working from home, that this this, we don't want anything bad to happen. We'll put it that way. And one other thing they highlighted was the waste, fraud and abuse. They kind of, the way that they worded this in the audit report is that COVID-19 could be used as a an opportunity to evaluate governmental spending and make adjustments. So maybe things you you've always done forever that maybe due to COVID-19 has kind of went away. Well, saying, take that opportunity and reevaluate. Hey, do you really need to keep doing these things that you've done for the past so many years? And that's pretty much it in the management letter. Again, those two items are more town wide type type documents. So I'm going to dig into the end of year report. Now, this, again, like I said, this is the, right in the beginning of school, they timed this perfectly. I have to submit this, excuse me.
Before you move on, I apologize. So the 1.2 million that the town gets, is that the COVID relief money? Is that separate from the money that the school department got? That money is not tied in together?
It is theirs. And in some, in some towns, school departments access that money if they were, if they need to do some additional hiring at the beginning of the year. We did not ask the town for that. That was something I think I pointed out to them when we did our budget presentation that we used monies that we had received during the school year from the federal government CARES money as well as Easter one. But yeah.
So they have 1.2 million on the town side, but they had, they had some kind of contingency they had to follow, right? There were certain guidelines within that money. Am I reading that correctly? That they, these funds are administered under CARES Act, these funds are currently limited?
I think there were some items that we were able to initially, some PPE equipment and that, that they covered for us.
Just quickly from my point of view, the town was allowed to spend in deficit, if you will. So they were able to open up a fund and say, okay, all these things happened between March and June. We're going to run a deficit. We know that there's money coming in. So the town was authorized to do that, to run a deficit, as to what the deficit was, I can't speak for that. And then money slowly did trickle in through FEMA relief and various sources. The town did pick up roughly 60,000 worth of PPE that we needed before school started. We were kind of panicked. We didn't really know what we needed. So we went by the state guidelines and masks and gloves and gowns and you name it. It came out to about 60 grand of what the town picked up for us, just to get us started before our relief started coming in because we didn't run a deficit. Again, they may have, I'm not really sure what that what that was. Yeah, so again, that's my understanding of that.
So their money is separate from ours?
Right, it's separate. Those were the only town monies that were really used for our COVID costs. But it's separate from us. Yep.
Thank you.
The so the next item is the end of year report. Again, the the timing is, I don't, I don't really care for it too much as the school's just starting and then you need to fill out my end of year financial reports. That's they, we have to bring in auditors and audit the report and it's just a small thing. And what this does, it determines if the town's meeting that school spending and if we're meeting our maintenance of effort for sped and certain things like that. So I did have one finding on this report. The, we had a MSBA payment that hadn't been received since 2014. I want to say when the the middle school project had concluded, there was one final payment that was never received. The town manager did did track down this payment and was able to get the monies. We had recorded it to our GL properly. When I had reported it, I reported it as a contract payment, not a progress payment. So that was one thing. It was a minor finding that the that the auditors picked up on. So I have since made the amendment and moved on. Again, there was like $342,000 that I put as a contract payment, should have been a progress payment. To be honest, didn't know there was a difference, but there is in the auditor's eyes.
And I guess, Justin, to the end point in that, was the proper person paid $342,000?
I'm sorry?
Was the proper person or organization paid that $342,000?
Oh, excuse me, this was money that the the town was receiving as part of the MSBA project of the middle school.
It had not been received by the town.
It hadn't been received since 2014 when the project ended.
Right.
MSBA owed us $342.
Okay.
Owed the town.
Owed the town.
Owed the town. So we did get the money, but I had to report that revenue. And like I said, I said a contract payment, not a progress payment. I guess in my mind, the project was already long gone. It wouldn't be a progress on the construction, if you will.
So that town, so that money went to the town coffers?
Yes.
Correct. Okay, correct. The town had been waiting for that for
Five years or so.
Five years. So, but that's clear. Project's done. I think we're going to be receiving MSBA payments for the next through 2023, I believe. They still owe us some more payments, but those are the contractual payments, not the progress payments. And that's to recoup, I believe the town back then had had funded a lot of the project. And MSBA is supposed to pay them back, if you will. So finally, I have the single audit. Now, the single audit is the federal grants. So any, let's say, town or municipality that gets expends over $750,000 in federal programs has to have an outside firm coming in and performing audit. And that includes the, as far as the school is concerned, the USDA, so that's food service. That would be our national school lunch program. The summer feeding program that we did run from March 19th, I believe, through the end of the school year, the free lunches there, IDA Title I, the entitlement, all the major entitlement grants. And I'm happy to report there's no findings or deficiencies on any of any of those.
Can I ask one question, Mr. Green?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Ladue, so on that, this audit report on page eight, there's just something I'm just not familiar with. It's under section B. It says the town has elected not to use 10% de minimis indirect cost rate allowed under uniform guidance. What is that referring to?
And I'm sorry, what page was that?
It's page eight under section B. It's the last paragraph there before section C. The town has elected to not use 10% de minimis indirect costs allowed under the uniform guidance. What is that referring to?
I believe that's referring to health insurance benefits or another indirect cost that the town may pick up. For example, if you have a teacher being paid out of a Title I grant, you are allowed to to charge indirect costs, if you will, the the cost of the health insurance benefits and various other things to the grant. We do not do that. We don't reduce the grant by the indirect cost that, so the town is actually absorbing that. I believe that that's what that's speaking to. The only thing that we do charge as we're required to by DSS is the 9% for MTRS.
Thank you for that clarification.
Anything else for Mr. Ladue under the audit reports? It's time to go.
I just want to say congratulations. You did a great job.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you too because you've also been working a little harder and changing things and forecasting and making sure that we land on our feet. So thank you very much and again, congratulations for great audits.
So the next item is more of an update and to kind of So the next item is more of an update and to kind of maybe get a feel from the committee to where we stand with facility rentals. To go back, I want to say November, early December, we had discussions about facility rentals, and the committee at the time had said, uh, maybe it was a little uneasy and stated that, you know, maybe on weekends when kids aren't in the building and stuff like that, that would be, make sense. The other part of that was to have the Board of Health approve a, a safety plan, if you will. So whatever organization came in would have to submit a safety plan to the Board of Health, as long as they approved it and everybody's good, we could go ahead and have rentals on weekends. Say the, it was extremely cumbersome. We had one group that had approached us. And I guess the, the cumbersome part about is the ever-changing guidelines that were coming out through the state. It's very difficult for a, I'll use that as an example, a dance group to come in and say, well, geez, you know, in February sometime, we want to have this competition. Here's our safety plan, and in December, well, those guidelines had changed by the time February got around. So they would have to submit, so it was just very cumbersome to go back and forth. So we haven't had any facility rentals. Just, just due to that. And, and to be honest, we have no way to really police those types of things when they were changing. It's just not our wheelhouse. We're a school first. We rent the facilities if, you know, we can. But we're always a school first. I have been approached by the youth Pop Warner Football League, that, that they're trying to plan their season for the upcoming summer and fall. So they approached me about utilizing the fields, and I said, well, geez, you know, right, right now, we're, we're kind of limited to weekends. But let me speak to the committee, and as long as we're, we're good with the plan going forward, I don't see why not. So that's why I'm here before you tonight, because that's what kind of prompted this whole thing. So, and we do have a new Board of Health Director, Allison Novak. So I recently was introduced and worked with her, and I said, geez, it hasn't been too easy for us to rent. We have these leagues that now want to utilize the fields. I don't want to tell them no, but what's the safest way to go about this? So she had actually given me, and as part of your packet, was a checklist that the Board of Health had put together. So rather than a group submitting a COVID safety plan, they would simply get the checklist that the Board of Health has issued. Pretty much attesting to the fact that they'll follow all safety guidelines. And the Board of Health wanted something on file. That way, if they show up, they can say, well, geez, you signed this and you said you were going to follow this. Also with part of that, she recognized that, you know, this is, the guideline has changed. Things could happen. There could be resurgence. So there was two other documents, the outdoor event checklist, which I think is like a, more of a canned checklist that the state had issued. And also the, the workplace safety standards for youth and amateur sport, sporting activities. She wanted me to provide those as well. And I believe in the, the document, they, they sign attesting that, yes, they've reviewed them. Those are what they're going to follow. If there's ever, you know, Board of Health shows up or there's a complaint, well, geez, now she has all this on file to say, well, this is, this is what you said you were going to do. So that, so that's the major change. So I wanted to bring it to the committee's attention that, again, we'd, we'd like to rent to the, to the leagues. We don't want to tell them no, because they're trying to plan their season or make them go elsewhere. But at the same time, we want to make sure that, that people are safe, so we want to work in, in concert with the Board of Health to make sure that that's, that's done. I'll be happy to answer any questions if anybody has anything.
So basically, Justin, what you're looking for is a vote of the board to, to start planning for, for the summer, spring, summer, in terms of facility, of outdoor, of outdoor rentals or indoor rentals or both?
I don't want to have to come back again, so I'd like to include indoor rentals, but I'm still taking everything as a case-by-case basis. And I, and I, if there's anything of, you know, importance, I'll, I'll certainly come back to the committee. But I think at this time, I'd seek indoor as well. Just so we don't have to keep talking about these types of things. And hopefully guidelines, you know, seem to ease up a little bit. You never know, but I'm going to defer to the Board of Health when it comes to that. And again, work with Allison to make sure that the events are safe. So, but yeah, I'd, I'd say for both outdoor and, and indoor. But just so everyone's aware, this primarily is for the Oxford-Webster youth football and cheer, just so they can plan their season, so we can tell them yes or no, and they can do what they, you know what I mean?
Yeah, 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 that's true, yes. Okay, the only other, the only complaint that I ever got from that group regarding that is the trash left on the field. As you see bottles and, you know, particularly like during night practicing, that in the morning, like a couple of years, it looked at, you know, and you can't blame it on a group. But later on in the year, that you do find a lot of trash that's left by the groups on the field. So some coaches do a good job picking up, some don't. Is there anything in there? And I'll ask your opinion on this, and even the, the indoor is one thing, indoor is a whole, a whole separate animal instead of the outdoor. Is have the group responsible to either take their trash with them? Is there receptacles out there?
We can make receptacles available. I guess my immediate response is, one thing we implemented just last year, it was just recently, was a security deposit. I want to say it was 250. So I make all these groups sign a lease agreement, or a rental agreement, rather, that has this 250 security deposit. So it's one of those things, I mean, if, if something like that's found, we could withhold that.
Right.
And that includes, you know, vandalism, trash, anything like that, that.
Right, and particularly with COVID now, is again, a custodian enough, enough to clean in the building now go out there and don the rubber gloves.
Pay for overtime with the custodian because of that, you're in excessive mess. Sometimes that happens in indoor facilities when they rent out for the whole weekend. You have a large cast of, you know, almost five, 600 people using an auditorium and other parts of your building. You'll see that, that happens, so.
And then back, back to the indoor. Let's go there. On the indoor, and I don't have the agreement in front of me. Do we have an Oxford Public Schools person employed during the times that they are there, like a site administrator?
Yes.
So, so someone, is it, is it a custodian or is it?
Custodian.
The custodian is also the site administrator?
Yeah, depending on the size of the event, we always require at least one custodian. If it's a large event, it's, it's our discretion if we want to add more. But there's always at least a custodian. The outside events, not always. We don't always have a custodian.
But that person is not an administrator.
Right, what I'm saying now, especially, what is something that this board may want to look, look at for indoor event is to hire, is to force, have the group, and I know you're upping the cost, but these are our facilities now, and first and foremost, they are schoolhouses. And, and to hire, to force them to hire an administrator or point from Oxford Public Schools, that would be a liaison to making sure, hey, let's separate them, let's kind of like look at, looking over our, our own house.
I would suggest to you, make that suggestion to the, maybe the policy subcommittee.
Okay.
As there's a pretty extensive policy on building.
There is, yes. I know, I know there is, yeah.
And if they wanted to add, add that, and they can come back to the committee and just make that part of policy.
I'll send that to Dave, yeah. Yeah, taking notes on that, but just what I'm saying is like, like if you, if you have a, like a dance group for a competition, and you're looking for the custodian for something, and the custodian's trying to clean up and like, holy cow, they could get a little overwhelming.
Point person.
Yeah.
A large, particularly a large group, yes.
I, I don't disagree. It's, it's a balancing act. You know, you don't want to make it so, so expensive for the group, but at the same time, you know, you're going to have some, somebody in charge, making sure that, that things don't go south. So, yeah, maybe the policy subcommittee could take a look at it and go from there.
So, I mean, I'm all in favor of, of obviously using, allowing the facilities to be used, whatever, whatever capacity, when we can do that. My question is, it sounds like you're taking this case-by-case, which is fine. My concern is if we approve this tonight, are you all of a sudden going to get flooded with new, and again, it's probably a small chance. But if we approve this, and all of a sudden you might get basketball league that wants to come in. So do we have an effective date? It sounds like this is a football league, right? It probably won't start until the summer. So do we have a start, like a timeline, we're looking to start this? Because if we just approve this tonight, again, probably won't happen, knock on wood, but you might get calls saying, hey, I want to use the gym in June. I want to use this. I want to use that. I want to bring a basketball league, and I want to do that. So do we have a timeline in, in mind? Are we pushing this off till the new fiscal year, July 1? Are we waiting till August 1? Like, do we have a timeline that is in your head? Because it sounds like case-by-case, but I think, and I, I love staying in the moment and focusing on one thing. But it could open up others wanting to do something prior to the start of the football.
The current request we have right now for Oxford Webster Youth Football Cheer, they have requested a day in mid-May for just to do warm-ups or some type of, some type of training. It was just for one day. We have not yet approved that as we don't, as a school district, we don't know what the field usage is going to be at that time. So we still have to look at that. We don't even know if it's available, as, as we're looking at having lunches and stuff outside. I can't say for certain if it's going to be available. So to answer your question, I would say July 1, because that, that's the second request we have from them, is to start sometime in, in July and start for the new fiscal year. So to give you a straightforward answer, I would say July 1.
Yeah, I just think, I think we should consider establishing a timeline. That way we know, okay, here's when it's going to start. Just so that it, it doesn't open up a floodgate. And then, you know, we're going to have to have buildings cleaned in the summer too, so we want to be, you know, mindful of that, so. Yeah, that's all. I just had a question about timeline.
I just want to say to the committee for full disclosure purposes, I am a person who puts in an application for the Oxford Webster Pirate Cheer Program. Just so that everybody's aware, and if you would prefer, I abstain from the vote. I would respect that.
So, one question that comes to mind is, I'm assuming the Board of Health is going to be, anything, anybody that comes to use our schools that would run through the Board of Health for all these decisions? You were saying that?
Yes. So just similar to how we did it, well, or didn't do it back in December, I would have the Board of Health give us the okay before I have, I, I rent to anybody. I won't sign the application till the Board of Health says no. They've, they've submitted all the paperwork they need, and I'd kind of coordinate that effort, so.
So there's a check and balance there, and they, they look at how many people would be coming into our building and all of that?
Yes.
Okay. That makes me feel a little bit more better about the situation.
Of course cautious of the fact that we're still working under the advisement that we should limit outside, outsiders coming into our buildings, particularly when, you know, when it is a school week and whatever. So I would really be cognizant of that, or at least until the end of the school year, that we really are very cognizant of doing that. The Board of Health, once they approve this, they're the ones who are going to monitor it through the Director of Public Health or whoever else they have come out and make a spot checked. If someone says, we are doing this, we are wearing masks, and we've had that conversation with Allison last week when we were meeting with her on another topic. So hopefully there'll be that check and balance now that they have someone in place too.
Another follow-up question. Have you spoke to other business managers and heard from other communities if they are opening up their facilities or not?
I have not directly spoken with the business manager. As part of the listserv, I've monitored that to see what other districts are doing. I haven't seen any facility rentals. There's been a conversation about it, and just to see what other business managers are doing. And I haven't seen that other districts are opening up to outside groups. So, and that's part of the reason. I, I feel, part of me feels badly. I, I know that the league's trying to plan their season and stuff, so it's really contingent upon decisions that we make here. So I'm trying to be, you know, mindful of that, but at the same time, we want to be safe. So that's why I kind of recommended the July 1 date, you know, maybe after school lets out, we can, and, and it's outside. So it's really a case-by-case basis. But to answer your question, I haven't seen other districts doing it now, not at this time.
I'll entertain a motion to allow the business manager to begin to accept invitation, applications for both indoor and outdoor facility rentals to be effective on or after July 1 in accordance with policy and all Board of Health regulations.
I'm in definitely.
Motion to have a second.
Second.
Moving second. Discussion.
Chair. Seeing that that organization came to you and said that there might be a May day they're looking for, do, do we need to have some sort of part of that in the motion that says that, that for this particular organization, seeing they've come to you already? Or do we, because if we approve that, then they wouldn't be able to use the field until July 1? That one day that they were looking for is what I'm saying.
Correct. I'll, I'll leave that up to the committee. I can't say for yes for certain, only because I don't, I just don't know.
Do we need to leave the door open if it's possible? Because if we approve this, the way I'm hearing the motion, it wouldn't, regardless, they wouldn't be able to do it until July 1. Do we want to make an amendment in it that says pending?
If you could, please.
May I make a suggestion? How about that we say like, outdoor facilities are available, but indoor facilities will not be available until after, you know, July 1? Because we want to keep our buildings, of course, you know, safe and, and just contained to our students and our staff as opposed to letting outside people come in. If they're on a field or something and they're socially distanced, that's a different type of a situation. But if they're coming into our buildings and using our facilities and whatnot, then that's a whole other level of cleaning. So I'm kind of comfortable with the motion if it's made in that type of a way where the outdoor portion of our facilities are being used, but the indoors are not accessible to groups yet.
But like the Nash's point, there is still outside, there is still outdoor capacity and restrictions. Right. But again, then you're going to open up for other agencies to want to come in during the spring season when we have our own stuff going on too, so.
Well, that we've always done in the past, frankly, if I'm wrong. We look at our, our calendars and we see if we're, they can come. And if there's availability, we allow it, but then if there's not, then they just can't have space because it's not available. So I don't think that would be a change.
Well, you also have to coordinate now what, with what is going on in this building. We're talking about lunches going outside. We're talking about probably end-of-year activities, graduation, class days, all other senior-type activities. Everything is now is moving towards outside, where if they want to do like an outdoor prom. Is like at the end of the year, it gets really busy, you know, and I, I would feel more comfortable waiting until July 1, when we have cleared our whole schedule. You know, and for a rental is one thing that's, that's, and that's wonderful, but those are great, they're our fields. But right now, we have extremely high, we're going to have extremely high use. As football's finishing up, soccer's finishing up. Do we have soccer now? Or just football? I'm not sure. Can I tell you? Football, volleyball, football was inside. Now we have baseball, softball, track, any unified sports. These fields are going to get really, really busy, you know, and then I know.
And the potential for attend on our field of a high school.
The potential, exactly.
So we're going to have a lot of use potentially of that, hopefully, but.
The, the only, the only restriction, and it's not a restriction, I think it's built right into the policy, is the softball field for the Little League. That's, that's the only one. Because back then people say, how come they get, how come they get to use it? Well, they built the field. And that, and that was kind of the quid pro quo, when that, when that, we were looking for the field and they said, we can build the field, but we want to be, have use for T-ball. And I think that's been great and further into the policy. So I'm looking for July 1. Yeah, good call.
So Justin, if I'm not mistaken, a group would submit an application to use the fields. We would then look at our calendar to say, here's what we've got going on.
Yes.
And if there's a conflict, sorry, you can't use the fields.
That, that's the first thing that, that we do. We look at the, see if it's available. And again, that's why I'm saying that mid-May was, I can't give them an answer right now, as we're still planning our events and some of them could be outside. So that one's a little tricky.
But if we were to, if we were to okay field usage, it would still go through that process. You would still look and say.
No matter what.
I'm sorry, I've got something, May 1, you can't have the field.
And that's school committee policy that the Oxford students get first, first dibs on the field, if you will, you know, so.
Right. So I, I guess my, my thought there is that the date doesn't matter, because we're going to, we're going to say, we're busy, then you can't have it. I agree with Pal. I think the indoor is a different issue because it's the cleaning issue. I'd rather wait till.
I would rather wait till school gets out.
That's why I'm saying, I agree with Pal's amendment to that motion to say, can we, can we amend it to say that the fields, outdoor facilities would be okay to start using? Again, I don't, I don't feel like we need to put a date on it, because we will tell them if we're busy, if we're using.
Effective immediately?
Sure. For outdoor facilities.
For outdoor facilities.
And it's still at the discretion of our business manager, and I would defer also to our superintendent. I mean, both of them can make the call if it makes sense, in my opinion, to allow the facilities to be used or not. Like, I trust their stewardship of our, of our grounds. And if it doesn't make sense, then it doesn't occur.
And the building principal of the two that are consulted with respect to the use of the field.
They don't feel comfortable allowing our grounds to be used, therefore they're not. But if.
However, what are the, what are the grounds for denying?
I would say, I think we have it outlined in our policy.
So we allow Group A to use it and then Group B, C, D through Z on dates that we're not available. And all of a sudden now we're all booked up. And the fields end up becoming a mess. And I, and just being selfish here, is we're talking about a graduation on a, on a field. And you're going to see mud and just really not in the best shape of what traditionally has been Oxford public schools. I know they've played football out there right now, but I think they, but I don't think they've been playing anything around the field. They're still practicing off the field.
I guess my question is, are we anticipating more groups than we've ever had in the past that want to use the field?
In my experience during the summer, it's just this one, the.
Do we typically have groups that rent in the springtime through the end of June?
I've never, no. Usually basketball, what that, that's done by April.
So it's really not a lot.
Okay, so in that application coming in, does that group want to use the football field? Or they're going to use the other field?
The Pop Warner football?
Yeah.
They want to use the game field on Sundays, I believe, one day on the weekend, but that's not going to start until.
Right. So, so the training day would be a practice field here or over there?
Correct. Yes.
Keep them on the football field, I'm happy. Because I think that's going to be.
Well, if they want something in May, the tent will be up on the field. So they, in all likelihood, so they won't be able to use it anyway.
So I think we should restrict use of the field at this stage.
I think we're going to be very cautious about having people there with, you know, the stakes and everything else that presents a challenge.
That's why the July 1st motion would work. The only thing I brought up in the discussion piece was if this group, who's the only one that's come to you, wanted something in May, then we would have to, you know, make an amendment to allow that. I mean, my point is, I totally understand what my two, my two colleagues are saying about it's up to us, but it just takes it off everybody's plate. This has been a long enough year. You know, Justin shouldn't have to check fields and Dave and Kevin. Like we just say July 1st, moving forward. Organizations can submit applications. That's, that's what I believe would be easiest for everybody.
I totally agree. Because there's Greenbrier, there's Rule Field, there are other fields in this town. If we just make it uniform up here until our kids have left for the summer.
So just tell, I'd say let's keep it July 1st. And this organization, if they want that one day in May, they're going to find another place if we're not going to put that in.
That's what I thought was just in the beginning. I agree, Dave. Anything else? I have a motion on floor. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. Mr. Crackioli?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Scriven?
Yes.
Mr. Sworps?
Yes.
I have all yeses as well. Filing affirmative, effective July 1.
July 1st. Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Nash, your report for us this evening?
Sure. I'm going to be brief this evening because both of the elementary principals are here to really go over any of the nuts and bolts for you. But simply to tell you that our five weeks are actually six weeks of planning that began right after February vacation, I think has really paid off as we've opened our first week. We've needed to do some purchasing of furniture, tables and desks for Barton and Chafee for that to happen. We also needed to expand some current hours that our health and safety monitors have in order to ensure the safety now that we have all students back. As you know, they've done, we've had numerous meetings from day one, going back six weeks, dealing with transportation, lunch, arrival dismissal, pool testing, classrooms, classroom schedules, who's returning, who's not returning. The number of remote students are before and after school program got off to a good start also on that same day. And so we're happy to report that we have only 11 students in K-1 who are full remote. So Mrs. Davis and Mrs. Levangi are what I call now, not to be confused with hybrid, our combo teachers. They actually have students physically in front of them and they have students who are at home. We also have 64 students at Barton who are remaining remote. We had about 82 or three as we began the year. We have 286 students back. We have continued to keep, as you are well aware in the MOA, two remote teachers at each grade level. So that allows parents whose students may have to be home because of COVID-related illness to decide if they want to jump in. They jump into these classes that are smaller than what they would have been, obviously, a few months ago. And I think that will work out well as we wind down the rest of the year. So I'll let the two principals fill you in on the opening week.
I think planning, planning, planning paid off. We did plan for as many facets of reentry as we could. Like you just said, I think my two remote teachers probably have the hardest task because they continue to teach now little humans in front of them while still teaching little humans at home. So they're the only ones who are now in that morphed mode. But for the majority of our students, obviously, 95.7% returned. So, you know, fortunately, again, I speak to it, the class sizes are really in our favor once again this year. And we took a lot of, I kept hearing the word opportunity tonight and I did, I honestly think we, we, both, both elementary schools, we really took this as opportunities. Teachers are now versed in technology that they never would have even, even in a million years taken a chance on. The Wizards kid over there, Kadian, has been absolutely instrumental. Our consultant with, at the beginning of the year, that John and I both brought in Tara Trainer, was instrumental working with Kadian to really get us hitting so that, because I heard some of the comments. In, in, in most of our schools, we actually had cameras on the teacher, then secondary cameras on the teacher and the students so that the teachers could see their screen and the other kids. So the kids at home were getting this real, I mean, they almost knew each other before we kicked back into overdrive. We had a lot of success with our planning nights when we had, we had great turnout for a lot of great questions and answers. We went back and forth. I think we were part of that. Just, we tried to make parents aware of the fact that we know that we don't know all the answers and that we're going to work with them. I think that was the most, you know, the most of the questions were just what ifs, what ifs, what ifs. And we just said, you know, that's a great question. Let's see. We had to make a few adjustments at Chafee for dismissal. Adjustments that we'll probably keep next year, to be honest, because they worked so well. Splitting the three different groups up and, and allowing the parent pickups, the buses. And honestly, just, fortunately for Dr. Nash, putting together those health and safety monitors, where at the beginning of the school year, I, I, I didn't even understand what the goal was going to be. But they've been so instrumental. I don't know how we would have done all of the things that we did without them. So. And I'm sure John has a lot of that same stuff to add. So I'll just, you know, zip it in a little of yours.
No, it, it goes back to, the biggest mistake was when Rob and I had our parent information night and there was only about 20 parents on the thing. We said, wow, this isn't a big crowd. But then we realized there's 50 in the waiting room we hadn't let in. So.
On my fault.
Again, we do this together. We.
Multitask.
But, you know, back on March 19th, we had the professional day. And I said this to Dr. Nash. I said Barton looked like a freshman dorm moving in day because everybody just got to work. And I got to thank the custodians because they, Justin and Dr. Nash provided us with some extra custodians and it came together in almost a day. And then the next couple of weeks, just getting ready to prepare. And knock on wood, it couldn't have gone any smoother, you know, as far as transportation with the buses, parent drop-off, parent pickup, EduCare, lunch, breakfast. Those are the big, the big tasks and all of them have gone off smooth. And I guess the biggest compliment, you know, to us is, you know, we haven't received any phone calls about, you know, buses being too late or, or parent drop-off not working and logistics and all that stuff came together. And it's really the staff that did it all. And I tell everybody, I'm like a proud father because everybody has done such hard work. And what happened last Monday when we all came back to school, it was the feel of the first day of school in September because now we had all the kids back and every staff member was exhausted on Friday and rightfully so. And, and it just was.
I think the kids were too.
Yes. No, no, the kids were too.
Took a lot out of them too, yeah.
And, and again, we still have, you know, Barton, we have 17 children that, that were full remote and now they're back full in person. And there's a little learning curve for that because when you're at home, no mask, kind of spread out on your couch, you know, do those things. And now it's, you're in a room with every desk facing the same way. So they're a little, they're adjusting, if you will. And it's going well. And I just, you know, I'll take any questions you want, but it really couldn't have gone any smoother.
Well, a huge thank you to you folks and all of your staff. Again, I can't thank you guys enough. One thing that comes to my mind though is transportation and buses and assigned seating. And I wonder how that's working out. I know the first week was probably getting all the kinks out. But do kids know where they're sitting on the bus and do they have their assigned seats now?
They are supposed to.
We got kicked, we kicked that one to Justin. I actually used the template that my wife got from Wachusett. And we were, I don't know if they ended up using it, but they, the district ended up taking that. I think Justin worked with somebody at Durham because kids have assigned seats. So.
Right. I just, you know.
Also, they leave a lot. I, I, you know, I know that we're down only two monitors on the heavier buses, but they get in, they know their seats. It's been pretty.
We worked through that. Initially, we were waiting for Durham's response back to Justin, but you can imagine that that did not come. So we need to take the bull by the horns ourselves. And Rob, as he indicated, had something that was used in his wife's district as a template. Obviously, we want to be able to do contact tracing and not to potentially have to quarantine an entire bus when you don't have to. So we're just getting that up to snuff and I think completing that. So we should be good to go.
That's what's here. I think there was a little bit of a learning curve to get Durham's rapid response.
I think it was. We were waiting for them to get back to us. They're actually, our, our contact person is either no longer there. So who do you call is kind of the question and who, who will get back to you? So we finally said, well, we just need to move forward with that. Justin, did you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, just quickly. I did hear back from Durham this past week. They are implementing assigned seating. They told me that every kid, especially at the elementary school, there's a name tag on every seat. And they have lists and the driver records who's there that day. Whether or not it's being enforced is a different story. I don't want to have to find out the hard way. So it's something we're going to have to look into. We do have as a backup, the, as Rob indicated, the seating charts. So we can fill those in if we have to. But without us being on the bus every single day, we kind of have to, we're at the mercy of the bus driver. But I am being told that they, they are doing that.
Check to make sure, ask for those before we need them, before it might happen that we need to do them.
It made me feel 100% better.
I hope some of the drivers get picked up. Some of the drivers are doing amazing this year.
I think so too.
They are so working with us to the, to the level. Like they're actually using their own cell phones to call. Because we have no intermediary between the main office. Very often we're calling and it's going up. So it's, it's been a little bit chaotic. And we understand there's a lot of changes going on. So it's just hopefully that, that, that works out. But both our secretaries have great relationships with Durham and the drivers. So. But if you wanted to.
I just want us to do our due diligence before, like Dr. Nash said, we find out that we have to do a, somebody who's been sick and we have to figure out if the kids were in the right spot and.
We're very concerned. Once the 28th rolls around, the high school, middle school come back, we think there's going to be a shift in several of the buses that we have been taking advantage of, been early. We know that that's probably going to change. So John and I are kind of typically awaiting that.
And I thank you, Mr. P, for being so proactive and sharing a best practice from your wife's district and.
Yeah, just to that point, you know, that's great that Durham's doing that because to Rob's point, I mean, I'm in the same district his wife's working and the bus company would not assign the seats. So that template is a nice template that a lot of us use. But I know for my building, our building in particular, where I'm at, I, I assigned all the seats. So I made, I made a sheet for every bus and we assigned the seats. So Durham's doing that, that's, that's a plus for our administration so they don't have to do it. So did I hear you correctly? They are doing it or they're going to do it? And what's the timeline? Because we're already.
They emailed me and said that they are doing it. So I have it written that, that doing it. Again, whether or not it's being enforced, we're going to have to do some blood checks just to make sure. We don't want to find out if we have to do contact tracing.
Well, that's the thing.
So we have to quarantine an entire bus. That's, that's the problem.
Well, that's the thing. And essentially you might have to quarantine half a bus anyways. But we have assigned seats that all the kids and parents are aware of. I've sent that document home to them. So if they aren't, if they aren't in the seat and they, based on the data we have, they're going to be a close contact regardless, right? If student A has it and they were in seat three and you're in seat four, well, guess what? You're a close contact. You might not have been sitting there that day, but that's what our sheet says. So all I'm saying is if they're doing it for you all, that's, that's a benefit because we have to do it all. The bus company in my district wouldn't do that.
Anything else?
The plus.
It's time to go.
I just wanted to say thank you to you both. I'm sure the first day, especially at your school, Rob, I mean, those kindergartners who had never set foot in there before must have been so excited to be there full-time with their teachers and all of their classmates. And kudos again. I appreciate all that you've done. And being on your parent Q and A was very interesting. I enjoyed it and you did a great job in fielding some of the questions that we didn't have answers to. So thank you again.
I'm glad I let you in.
And just to add to that, from that Q and A, the big takeaway was EduCare.
Yep.
As you all remember, and EduCare couldn't be running any smoother right now. So.
Yeah, that, that is huge. A lot of parents needed that.
Yes.
Yep.
I enjoyed the humor. It was, it was, it was awesome. It put me at ease and I've watched a lot of entry presentations to families from all different aspects. And I enjoyed yours the most, guys. It was the best, the best.
Serious when they needed to be. They presented the information. I think they answered the questions and said, look, we know. We also, I think, had a pretty good track record opening. And that always helps when it comes to April and you're doing reentry. I think people were confident in the administrative team and all of the staff that when we said we were going to do something, we did. And when we didn't, we communicated what had happened. So I think that all, that trust that, that I think we've established since last August really has helped us too. And our parents have been great.
I would say, just Dr. Nash asked us about the high school, middle school, what could we offer for advice? And I didn't have a direct answer. At that point, I think letting the staff tell you your blind spots is the best thing that you can do because they know all of the what ifs. And they say them in nice ways so that they're not saying, hey, you forgot this. But they're saying, you know, what if this, and oh, man, good point. And then, you know, next thing you know, you're making that change. And so that would be the only advice. Let them kind of guide you because there's so many blind spots. Still find them.
Thank you, Jerome.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
All right. Dr. Nash, the middle school MSBA project update.
Yes.
And Justin, if you're on, go on as well.
So we, Justin and I received a call last week from KD DeCristofaro from MSBA to let us know that the middle school had not been moved forward to the next eligibility period. I think two things that I took from that. One, we were close in terms of making it into the next round, but there were other districts with buildings that had more urgent needs. And also the amount of funding at this time that's available for that. We have the ability to resubmit this and update our SOI. The original SOI had priority number five listed. Given the conversations that we had in our, twice with them, it would probably behoove us to look at priority number seven, which I had emphasized to them, which really is about being a building that really is outdated to provide a full range of services for the needs of our current middle school students. I think the submission date is through June 25th. I think that was the submission date. So I would ask the school committee this evening to provide us with direction as to whether you would like us to move forward to resubmit that SOI for the middle school.
Discussion.
I would greatly appreciate a resubmit, resubmission. I know how much work it was, Justin, for you to do it the first time. And I know it's probably going to be a lot of work again. But I feel like we were so close and I trust in God's providence all the time. Maybe this gives the town a little bit more time too to, to wrap their head around it. And I would hope that our town manager and our thing com board and our board of selectmen would advocate on our behalf and inform our community that we're going out for this. I think at town meeting, we need to also advocate and be very transparent that we got this far in the process. And unfortunately, you know, we weren't able to continue because we weren't making it to that next round. But we're going out again and we know we have to do it because of the state of our buildings. And, you know, I appreciated our town manager's fantastic presentation on behalf of the fire department. When they came in, they showed us, you know, a year or so back, all the needs that were there in their buildings with pictures, even the DPW. If we put some similar type of presentation together for town meeting where people can see our buildings and understand unfortunately, how outdated. where people can see our buildings and understand unfortunately how outdated most aspects of that middle school are, including with the ADA and all the different upgrades that we need to do that just can't happen without this project and this funding coming forth from the state. It would be greatly appreciated again. I just, to think that the state could match all this money and then the town would just have to also match some funds. It would, we wouldn't be able to do such a project without, without that, so.
To be clear.
Yeah.
Do you, Justin, we don't have, this is not a warrant article at this stage?
No.
This is just moving it forward, you know, eventually when we do get to that primary list of funding, then we'll go to a warrant article. And I agree, building consensus early is great on these type of projects.
If we educate the town at this town meeting, like here's all the homework, this is all the stuff that we've been doing, this is how far we got in this process, we're going out again. And, you know, putting in another SOI for June 25th with this new priority seven as opposed to five with all the pictures and the evidence. And people have a whole year to talk about it, you know? If it does get accepted, correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Nash, we would end up having to do a process where we would have a building, you know, committee and all these other things happening. I want people to know that that would be a great time for them to consider joining that, you know, committee and joining those future endeavors for this project. It'd be great if we had people on board in the town that are aware of it that can advocate for us. Because this time, I think we did a lot of that advocating and we informed town departments that we were going for this. But if the town departments had even more knowledge and our constituents, it would be more powerful.
However, let's not put, let's not put the cart before the horse. For us, we have to have a vote of this board if we're going to resubmit.
Right.
The last application was denied. Now we're gonna, now, and if this board so sees it fit, we will go again, appeal to the state for a second time, for a second look at our application.
It's actually, it starts, the process actually starts anew. We go up against whoever is our quote competition for next year. But to your end, just in order to submit the SOI, this board will have to, after this evening's vote, if they, you determine that you'd like us to go forward and to resubmit an SOI, change some of the priorities, clean up and update the information that's already there. It's probably not gonna be as extensive as the original SOI submission. We would still have to come back to get two votes, one from this board, then one from the Board of Selectmen. Once you get into that mix, remember, if we had moved to the next stage, you would have had 270 days to convince your constituents before you come back. So there's plenty of time, I think, to do that. Once you get into that round and you can start to form your building committee and do all of those things that need to be done in those 270 days, determining what the needs are and obviously moving forward with some kind of a design process feasibility study and all of that. So you will have ample time to get that information. I hear what you're saying out there in that process. Absolutely.
And then once it does go to that process and you'll appoint a chairman of the building committee, that person becomes a spokesperson for this project, not Dr. School Committee.
Tonight, it's simply, would you like us to submit or not?
Go ahead.
To that point, I'd like to make a motion that we ask them to resubmit proposal to the MSBA.
Motion in a second. Further discussion? Roll call vote. Mr. Crackoli?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Sworbs?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Filing affirmative. And so we are on that, on the list for a resubmission. Please, Virginia.
Two more comments, and I know it's not on here, but I would like to echo my thanks, first of all, to the elementary principals for five, six weeks of really planning again to ensure that we had a smooth opening. With all due respect, I think our principals and our teachers have been extraordinary in ensuring that this was as smooth as possible, considering that many students had not been in school since a year ago. For those who come back, it's been a year. So this is brand new. It's like August, September, all over again in April. So I really want to commend everyone, our custodians, as they mentioned, staff pitched in from different buildings. Everyone just, I think, is used to the fact that we, there's a lot of planning, but when you plan well, you cover most of your mistakes. And I think what Rob said, you always go back to the teachers. They're the ones that seem to think of the small things that you can't think of or you thought you thought of, but you really didn't. So I really commend all of them. I'd also like to echo too, my thanks to the OAA president. We went back and we're doing a history of how many meetings we've had together from day one, back in our remote, back in March, every single week. We met as a full administrative team online and she was invited to every single meeting from day one and she attended every single one of them. So that was weekly from March through the time that we reopened. And that's really an extraordinary gesture. And I think when we talk about trust and respect, I think that's, those are key components. And I just really want to thank her because I think she and I have been able to work really well together for the best interest of students. So I appreciate that. Also, one comment about Katie and Phillips. One of the things that I said three years ago about Kadian, I've worked with lots of directors of technology and there was always something missing. And what was missing was many of them had not walked in the shoes of being a building administrator. Kadian was a building administrator, so he gets it. He gets what it's like when you're leading a building and a teacher says, I need this technology tomorrow. He gets it. And that, to me, is such a critical piece. Not only is he, does he have a brilliant mind, not only does he think about these things, but it's the effortless way that he goes about doing it. I have never met someone that I could ask and say, would you do this? And it's done. When you don't have someone, it's tough enough for teachers to try to do all of this, to try to figure out all the things they needed to figure out last March. But along the way, I can guarantee you that they never heard Katie and say, sorry, can't do that. Nope, can't do that. Nope, nope, nope. They didn't want to hear that and I can bet that they didn't hear that. So I think that's another person that I think has been really extraordinary in making sure that things are working in the district this size. So I just wanted to make those comments. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Transition on our agenda. And Mrs. Griffin, you have a report for us.
I do have a warrant report for this evening, April 12th, 2021. I signed a food service warrant on March 24th, 2021 for $20,559.87. I signed an accounts payable warrant on March 30th, 2021 for $74,341.55. A payroll warrant dated April 1st, 2021 for $569,216.98. An accounts payable warrant for April 6th, 2021 for $107,386.61. And an accounts payable warrant dated April 13th, 2021 for $129,598.05. That's all.
Dave, you want to continue with your request? Or you have a floor?
No requests. I have an upcoming policy subcommittee meeting this Thursday and I'm, again, very grateful for everything that has been done for us through our teachers and all the support staff and our custodians. I mean, they just have gone above and beyond with sacrifices. And I think this is honestly, even though it's been one of the most difficult years in education ever, I think it's been one of the best just from the aspects of the growth and to see what the kids have gotten. It's amazing. So, and thanks to Dr. Nash too. I mean, honest to goodness, Dr. Nash, I don't think we could have done any of this without your leadership and dedication. We would, we made it as easy as possible on all of us and it's because of just the extreme wisdom you have. Huge blessing to have you have come at the time that you came. And again, I think that's back to God's providence there. Poor Dr. Nash walked in and then like a week later, everything hit the fan, so I'll always be grateful that.
I have nothing, but I said all of my thank yous earlier and I echo Mrs. Griffin as far as Dr. Nash and her comments. And also to Helen too, who's also working overtime, double time, and I appreciate all those extra efforts.
Mr. Burke?
Yeah, I don't want to be repetitive. We've thanked everybody and can't thank everybody enough. So I'll put out a, just another plug for the superintendent search that I, I hope our staff, our teachers, administrators, everyone gets involved with meeting these candidates as they come through the district and then subsequently providing us some feedback. We'd really like to hear what you have to say before we make a very important decision.
Mr. Crackoli?
Yeah, thank you. Our request, still would like to get that school choice data, those who have left, those that we have coming in. I know it's not a high priority, but at some point I'd like to see that. Also, it's hard to believe this Saturday is gonna be a year ago. I know it was a Friday, but I opened up an email from Helen and she was announcing the passing of Rhonda Adoni. So that's gonna be one year this Saturday. So I just want to let Mark, her husband, Keenan and Braden, who went to school here, and all her friends within the system, I just, you know, I'll be thinking of you all on Saturday. They are my neighbors and I can't believe it's been a year. She was a great woman, great to work with. I had the privilege of working with her in some buildings and just can't believe it's been a year. But my thoughts are with the Adoni family and all her friends this Saturday. And Dr. Nash, I'm gonna quote you, building administrator who gets it in a central office position now. And I think that's what we have. We have two candidates for superintendent who are both building administrators right now. I think they both get it. So anybody who's interested, Dean Packard's the principal of Charlton Middle, Mike Lucas, the principal of Tantascwa. If you know anybody in those districts, reach out and ask about these two. I think we have two great candidates. It's gonna be tough to decide potentially on one of them, but I'm really excited about it. So thank you very much.
And I have nothing to say. I think my board members did a great job, hidden A to Z in all the spots. We had great presentations tonight. We learned a little bit, we laughed a little bit, and most importantly, we ate something nice. And that's it. Intended motion adjourned.
A public comment.
Public, public comment. Do any public comment? I know, I get you. It's on your agenda. I get you.
All right, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion adjourned. We have a second. All those adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're a favor. Filing affirmative and we are adjourned. Thank you all. Have a good night.